Tricia Elgleyson, Assistant City Clerk. You are here by the order directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, October 16th, 2023 at 5:45 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on a quarterly Sustainable Dubuque update.
Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for October 16th, 2023. As a reminder to our viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance at tonight's meeting is Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones, Resnick, Russell, Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
We'll begin tonight with a work session for a quarterly Sustainable Dubuque update.
All right, and Gina, I see you're ready to go.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, City Council. I'm Gina Bell, Director of Sustainability, and tonight I'm going to have you guys put the work in work session once again. The goal of our work session tonight is to, for me to better understand and for you all to better understand your values as they relate to the work of the Sustainability Office. So you've set your goals and priorities for the year, and the city can focus on those, and many of them have ties with the Sustainability Office. But other work is also still happening, and much of it is connected. And as we move our climate action plan forward, we want you to know your values beyond the priorities that you've set for the city as a whole, and to get to the root of why you support or connect to some of the actions in our plan. This presentation will first give you an overview of some of the climate actions that are already in progress or on the horizon, and then I'm going to ask you all to consider which actions you feel most connected to and why. You'll have time to reflect on those, and then participate in an activity to go a little bit deeper, to discover the root of why you value those actions. And then we'll try to summarize what we've discussed and how we can move forward to make Dubuque more livable, viable, and equitable. So the inspiration for this work session was really this quote, "If you want to build a ship, don't drum up people to collect wood and don't assign them tasks and work, but rather teach them to long for the endless immensity of the sea." And I thought this was fitting because of climate change and sea level rise, but also because I want you to really dig deep into all of the actions and the interconnectedness of them, and not asking you to do the tasks, but think about it as a whole and how it interfaces with all of your work, including how you feel about them. So the activity is, I'm going to go through and list items from our climate action plan. You'll think about why it's important to you, and take a few minutes to write down your thoughts. I have some prepared questions. And then you'll work with a partner on City Council, I think there might be a trio, to interview one another, and then you'll return to the large group and we'll all chat about what you discussed, if you're willing to share. So these are our high-level climate action sectors and goals. It's a community-wide plan, as you all know, 50% by 2030. We're currently at a 34% reduction of our greenhouse gas emissions, and I don't want you to choose one of these high levels because they're important, and we have goals within each one, but we want you to really focus in on a specific action that we're taking. So again, I'm just going to keep repeating what you're supposed to be doing, so you can be thinking about it as we're going through. Choose one of these actions that I'm going to discuss. If there's something that I don't mention, but you know we're doing it, or you want to see it done, pending budget, capacity, political climate, whatever it is, you may choose that. Think about the different aspects of the action, and then write these down. So in our buildings and energy sector, we have a couple of things that are in the works. One is looking at benchmarking our municipal buildings, so using the Energy Star Portfolio Manager. In the climate action plan, it calls to invite other public-facing entities to do the same. It's a voluntary disclosure, but right now what we're working on is getting all of our buildings together and starting to collect the data and putting it into the Energy Star Portfolio Manager. We have a revolving loan fund focused on energy efficiency efforts, and we want to keep moving this money through the system, so this is outside of our budget process. This is money that was approved well before my time, that departments can borrow for energy efficiency improvements that have a quick payback. So Fire Headquarters, a couple of years ago, installed new lighting fixtures, and then it was paid back in about a year and eight months, and so that fund is then available for other departments to use. And then conducting a building energy audit on city-owned facilities. So we've done an audit, an energy audit for City Hall. We have a list of recommendations to implement, and some of those you'll see in the budget process, but we'd like to do it for all of our city buildings. In transportation and land use, we've updated our city vehicle purchasing policy and our budget process to help us default to alternative fuels, and then looking at fuel efficiency minimums for internal combustion engine vehicles, and which parts of our fleet we're going to focus on. So we have transit, we've got light duty, we have heavy duty. We also are working to implement existing safe routes to schools plans that are already in motion, and some of that is education and outreach, some of it is infrastructure changes, and then also looking at complete streets corridors and trying to build up that body of work. For solid waste and recycling, we want to examine all the options that we have for not only residential composting, but also commercial composting, and then have the landfill complete a review of their capacity for food waste. For climate health and safety, we are preparing public buildings to serve as alternative shelters for high heat or extreme cold, safe havens during emergency times. We want to educate the public about the health risks of different climate impacts, and we want to do our outreach in a way that reaches diverse populations, and a lot of that is a language barrier, and so we want to make sure that we are translating these documents. We're in the process of working with the University of Iowa Translation Students to get climate impact documents, like a what-to-do-in-high-heat-or-wildfire-smoke in Spanish and So for food, we want to look at how we can support food rescue and food donation to get to the people that need it most. We want to review our urban agricultural allowances and make sure that everyone understands and that they're well communicated. And then we also want to look at our policy in terms of city-owned facilities and how they procure food, and can they make an effort to do more local foods, to limit transportation as well as supporting the local economy, and then also looking at food waste and what they're doing with waste. And then tree space and green canopy. So we want to update our urban forest evaluation. Some of this will happen with the USDA Urban Forestry Grant, but not for the whole city. We want to continue to replant trees and plant at 110% or more of what we've lost, and we want to look at heat island impact, and how can we use trees and other technologies to limit heat island impacts? And then in terms of capacity, thinking about emergency response kits, so the Teen Resiliency Corps focused on emergency preparedness this past year. They handed out several, 87, I think, emergency preparedness kits, starter kits. We want to keep expanding that and making sure that our residents are prepared in case of a disaster. We want to keep looking at how we can increase density and support multiple levels of housing, single-family, multifamily, and then make sure that people also are having a social connectedness, or there's a neighborhood cohesion in there. And then we also want to think about building relationships throughout our neighborhoods and across different barriers that might exist, whether they're real or not. So that was a lot. I put them all on this slide in a shortened version, so I'm going to give you a couple of minutes to think through the action that is speaking to you the most, and I'm going Does everyone have one? So if this were a game show, I would guess which ones you chose, but we're not going to do that this time. So I'm going to ask you to answer the following questions. You have them on your screens, right? I just want you to think about what you consider when you think about this specific action. Do you have questions? Do you have ideas for solutions of how we should implement this? And then what action is important to you and why? Why is it important to you? And I'm going to ask you that you physically write it in handwriting, because there's some good physiological reasons between brains and hearts and feelings, so please take Okay. This might be the hardest part. You have to get into pairs and one trio, and you're going to choose who's going to speak first and who's going to interview first, and then I'm going to ask that the interviewers channel your favorite two-year-old and get your whys ready. So after every explanation that the presenter gives, you're going to say why. So the example is an energy efficiency project, and so I know we're saving people money, and that's important to me. And so the interviewer's going to say, "Why is saving money important to you?" Well, because saving money helps people out. Why is it important to help people out? So you want to try to get deeper with each why. You can go up to nine whys, and see where you end. Okay, I think they've chosen their pair.
I call trio.
Okay.
The table says two and three, too.
So you have, I will cut you off halfway through of your time so that you can switch.
Okay.
So talk until I interrupt you, and I'll interrupt you guys a little bit earlier, so you have more time. Okay, go.
So, no, I'm in a, I mean.
Oh, I am?
Yes. Replanting tree loss at 110%.
Why? Why am I ready?
Because I think it's important to leave a lasting green legacy. There are so many benefits of trees for everyone.
So tell me what it is that you're passionate about.
I'm conducting building energy audit on all primary city-owned facilities for $100.
Energy efficiency, heat island effect, beauty, clean air.
Answer in the form of a question.
Trees act like small.
It's the most efficient way.
They bring people, give people a place to socialize.
Instead of just doing the same.
Place for people, especially people that don't have a good conditioning, a place to go and get cool.
But we use data to find out where is actually the issue. It could be in the egress. Could be just some unofficial heating, so that's why I like.
The challenges are, the challenges are.
Good. I'm going to wait for that.
Okay. Especially sensitive to rachelies.
Again, I'm concerned about the cost of those.
Getting, getting the engagement.
Because.
Get them all.
Because I believe, I consider that money has embedded, embedded energy in money. Because citizens have used, citizens have used a lot of energy in money. They've gotten, you know, they've gotten gas in their car, they've gotten up and out, and there's a lot of energy embedded in the money, in your paychecks and things that they pay for. So that, everything, what I'm just saying. Money, it takes energy to earn money, and so that's why I think. Why? Okay, always rich to you. Okay, so that's mostly what, I don't know that anybody's ever bought. Yes, and I don't know that anyone's ever did that idea. It's pretty obvious that there is energy for money. They don't want to buy it because things are expensive, and they just think that, yeah. But a lot of this, if you spend a lot of money, then you spend a lot of energy, and it's kind of like.
That's perfect.
I just don't know. Why don't you know? Why don't you know what you don't know? Could you read a book? Read this. Just read this out.
You can do this. It's a story.
All right, so I'm just going to go out of the box and combine a couple.
No, no. Why?
Because it's important to integrate this.
So if you can hear my story first. All right, so I'm talking about transportation and use tied into a complete street.
Is it time?
You can switch if you want.
So I am an advocate of neighborhoods.
So what do you, you're.
And the other one, the whole other place, which is also part of this as a food rescue program. Does that have to do with?
This has to do with neighborhood, the creation and the livable space, where you're not necessarily using energy per se, like fuel.
And we are.
Making each neighborhood a place to grow and play.
To live, work, and play, just like.
The neighborhood.
Except for Dubuque, the concept is a touchy subject, because most people are used to living in houses, not in apartments. So if we can have energy-efficient apartments that people can live in, and energy-efficient neighborhoods.
Eddie, what do you know? What do you want?
Street square and bike lane. I will say, my three-word, conducting building energy audits, implementing lead streams, and creating outreach. Maybe I'll do the building energy audit. Gosh, Dubuque is a downtown that's got energy.
So with the energy audit, I think.
So you think sustainability is.
Obviously, we're 50%.
You already did. We're a step ahead of you guys.
We're a student. Anyway, so you're doing this mostly, you enjoy the ones that you chose. Emphasize the neighborhood connections and individual communities within our community.
Because I think what's realistic, money making. So I think the energy audits.
You know, money is important, right?
This is a way to lessen their daily cost of life.
I think facility management is a big part of our job.
You don't have to worry about expenses.
But actually, the.
So I just thought that when she talked about pride in the neighborhoods and the neighborhood associations, and just the fact that it is. And I remember living in Manhattan, and everybody was very happy to be in their own zip code. Lived and worked and played in your own zip code.
That's the idea.
That's the idea, and so this would be, I think, another downtown.
Did you support your zip code? I go to the restaurants locally.
Yeah, so those, ones of code in Manhattan, you know.
Bigger than the view.
So you kind of have to get that feeling.
No, I get that.
So that's what I'm saying, because I've seen that one. You can live and play there, and you can support there. It just is a little microcosm.
Tell me the category.
I can find transportation, land use, because on the transportation side.
Is that something?
You see, it could be. And then.
What about, what about land use?
So land use would be the, we're, we're, so restoring and repurposing, because you use less energy and you have less climate change issues.
You mean land use as in, we need to intensify use and get more. I mean, are you thinking about?
Take the fisherman downtown, and you know, it would be less impact on the environment if we repurposed and rebuilt that and tear it down.
Preservation, which I know you.
So that would be.
I was saying, one, I'm sorry.
Transportation, I combined with complete streets. So obviously, complete streets gives you the whole.
And I really do complete streets. They've been talking about it since 10, 15 years.
And complete streets to me are complete neighborhoods. I don't know, you've been on the conversation.
Nothing happens. What do I really? They keep talking about complete streets, but.
And, I'm trying to say this, sometimes it takes money to make money in order to do some of this.
30 seconds to finish up and thank your partners.
The need is to be satisfied, because you have.
You can get grants.
I know, but you can have that taxation with taxes, but yeah.
You can, you can say you want to raise taxes. Go right ahead.
Why?
I'm like a running for office.
Because.
Yeah.
They can hang it cheap.
You could run there for two years. You could have run. And then two years for the year.
Okay. So, who asked the most wise?
She did.
He called me a wise guy.
All right, I like it. I keep thinking of all these games we could make this into, like. Okay, so I would like, if you're willing to share, if everyone would share the climate action that they chose, first off, just like in a round robin, and then I put some reflection questions up here. I'd love to know if you're willing to share the values that you assign to the action, or what your gut reaction was to the root value that you got to. Was anyone surprised by the root value that they got to? Do you feel like we've been successful in the action? What information do you still need, or what do you want to better understand? What, you know, if we were wildly successful, what would it look like? What would we see? What would we hear happening? That's a lot of questions, I know. Let's start with what the action is, and then we can go, and you can share as you feel comfortable. Will you start?
All right, sure. I chose to conduct a building energy audit on all primary city-owned facilities for $100. Okay.
And then I said, why?
And so then I had, so everything I will ask is in the form of a question, like Jeopardy. No, actually, what we, what I think is important about this is, it is the most efficient way. We've got to have data about what we're going to be doing. Good data will help us focus on each individual building, because they don't all need the same treatment, a blanket, you know, and so that's the most efficient way. Of course, there's insulation, but you know, what about heating and cooling? Can we do something with that? And then one of my questions was, are we going to do this over time? Because I think heating and cooling seasons are different as far as energy, energy escapes relatively about the same, but there are differences between those two seasons. So I'm hoping it's over time, and there's the overlap seasons, too, and how does, how does the building react in spring and in fall, and how much do we have to add to that? You know, sometimes I don't have to turn on my heat till, you know, November, and so it'll be interesting to really find out about the building. Or is it the ingress and egress situation? Because that's, that's huge for some of these buildings. And she asked why to all of those. I just want, she did her job. But the other thing I wanted to talk about was, I'd, and I've said it many times, that I haven't gotten much support for this, but I really feel that there's embedded energy in money, and so when you ask for a lot of money, because people go out every day and work very, very hard, put money in the car, and spend a lot of energy earning money. So when we, when we have high-priced solutions for sustainability efforts, it makes me wonder, is this, is this the best way to do things? So I think this energy audit will help us to focus that and make smart decisions about how to build the, the energy usage for these buildings.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Okay, so I guess I'm next. He didn't ask that many questions, by the way. He didn't, his whys were not as significant. I kind of went out of the box, and I looked to combine transportation, land use, and complete streets. Okay, and, and so I am an advocate of the old neighborhoods, of strong neighborhoods where people can live, work, and play, they can walk, they can bike, they basically have pride in their neighborhoods, and you know, their zip codes, as you know, as we used to say in New York, you'd always stay within your own zip code kind of thing. And when we talk about complete streets and land use, I'm also a preservationist, and as you know, it's less harm to the environment to repurpose a building than it is to tear one down and reconstruct. So I think, based upon Dubuque's architecture, we have so many historic buildings that I think could be successfully repurposed into a combination of housing and commercial, residential commercial, if you will, to kind of give energy to the various neighborhoods within the city. And then I'm also an advocate for the electric car charging stations, and I think in addition to corridors that we are working on for complete streets, that not only do we have paths for bikes and cars, but we also have, you know, salt and pepper throughout, some charging stations, and come up with a. And come up with a, some kind of a way to incent people to use them and maybe have a very card that they can get for the first time that gives them free usage up to a certain point. And then we'll pay regularly after that, once we get involved. And then to tie that in, you might have e-charging stations for the bikes that I know a lot of people are starting to use as well. So that was my pride and my hope for the climate in Dubuque.
Okay, so I chose what David did, the energy audit. And I interpret it as facility management, a couple of things. The, I think, a core responsibility we have as a council to look out for the bricks and mortar of our city and to make sure that it is going to be structurally sound and sustainable. I also think that historic buildings are our brand. That a lot of the structures we as a city have our employees in are historic structures. And so maintenance-ing them, doing an audit, updating what we're able to only adds to the long-term use of those buildings so that they continue to be used in their capacity that they're in. And of course, sustainability, in the end, the goal actually will very likely save taxpayers money if we do it right. So if we make those decisions out of the gate that will cost upfront, but we know and we can estimate based on maybe our study that we do, that these specific things would probably lend to a cost savings for the taxpayer in the long run. To me, that only makes sense and that's kind of our job as well. And then employee engagement. And the way I kind of spelled that out was, in order to attract workforce, people want to work in an updated facility. They want to work in a nice place. Right? I mean, we all want to go into a place that we think makes us feel comfortable and motivated and engaged and a place we want to be in. It's the reason we hang art on our walls or, you know, paint a wall a certain color. And so I think it would actually be motivational for our city workforce to work in an updated facility with modern, energy-efficient enforcement of the structures. So I never thought I would land on facility management. I have to be honest, that's not really my thing. But I think in the long run, it makes sense as a council.
Well, these are great. And out of that whole list, I mean, there was a lot of great choices. But I landed on the East West Complete Streets corridors. And the reason I did it, I was looking, you know, when I was looking through the list, I thought about the highest impact ones that we could potentially go with. And actually, I thought of that impact in multiple ways. Not only, so first of all, there's an impact in the real world. There's the lowering the greenhouse gas emissions, increasing air quality, improving mobility and quality of life and all those things. But it's also highly visible. And I think that highly visible things can often be the ones that can lead to the most, they can build momentum for things later. And it gives us a lot of opportunities to educate people about, educate the whole community about why we would be doing something like that. If it's not, it's not just so cars can get somewhere faster. It's a lot of different reasons and I think it gives us an opportunity to do that. And I know we're in the process of creating one aspect of that corridor. And actually, we've got multiple things going that are going to help us do that. So I'm excited to see that work moving forward. But I think, I guess that's the main reason that I chose that and what I was thinking about as I did it.
I chose the low-hanging fruit that I'm most familiar with. And forgive me for that, but I've been on the DMA SWA board for all 18 years, I've been on the council. And we're working furiously on finding a future for food waste. And it goes beyond just that simple question. The question was asked the DMA SWA board to study expanding that process. And we're up to our eyebrows on exactly that right now. So that's, that part's easy, it's underway. But the related parts go with it, too, like food rescue, which was part of another one. That's an important thing to get the food while it's still usable for something other than tomorrow's energy, to get it used, transformed into human energy today. So we're working on that. We've got some grant dollars available through our waste minimization grants that people could use right now to craft some programs to do that sort of thing. The other piece that I stole from another one is home composting. Some of our most successful compost operations are in the colleges where a lot of food waste is composted onsite along with the organic waste. The challenge, of course, is we all lived through a god-awful mess with a private composting facility, Western Dubuque, about five years ago, where there was too much food, not enough carbon residual to go in with it, make a mix that was successful and didn't stink all the way to there. It's found this thing was like our site of Farley. So it was a terrible, terrible whoops, it just didn't work. So how do you balance all that? And the challenge to large-scale composting at our Dubuque site, frankly, is the park department, carbon waste is all kind of recycled onsite for beneficial use as well. So it's already doing a good thing. There just isn't enough of the grass, leaves, branches, and twigs coming in to balance a great deal of food waste. So we're trying to find out what our capacity is and where to go next. And we're having a good time with the conversation. But success is pretty much within risk, reach, but it's not unlimited, what we can do there or at any site with food waste. So we have to look at all the possibilities, too, and that includes enriching our digestion program at the wastewater facility as well. And we know we've got some other problems there to solve on another scale to make us able to continue and grow that program. So that was mine.
I went with support and facilitate food donation, food rescue, and distribution programs to food insecure people. I know it's not an easy task, it's a very large one. There is always a lack of solutions, funding, a lack of coordination now that post-COVID, between all the different organizations. But it's important to me because of the pure and simple fact of no one should go hungry in our community. Everybody should have something to eat that's a quality substance, not just processed. So that's kind of where I'm at with that. It's not an easy solution at all to come up with in two minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, no surprise, my choice was replanting tree loss at 110% or more. And I think it's really important for us to leave a lasting green legacy. And it's, tree equity is important because everyone needs the benefits of trees. And that includes energy efficiency at your home, promote outdoor activities, community engagement. And it gives people ownership in their community when you drive by and you say, yeah, I planted that tree. It talks about clean air, clean water, beautiful neighborhoods, reducing heat island impacts, having a cool place to go on a hot day if you don't have air conditioning, and shading the pavement so that it lasts longer. So there's so many benefits for trees and certainly that's what I'm passionate about.
Thank you so much. Does anyone else have anything else they want to say about this before we end? So what I'm hearing, this is really fascinating for me. So thank you all for letting me do this and ask the questions instead of be questioned. I think this is really helpful in my work in that I can take your reasons as we move things forward. Because the list that I shared with you is not exhaustive. We're doing a lot of other work, some of the things you mentioned. But it helps me in my efforts as we're speaking with the community to say, hey, here's another reason why we're doing this. It's not just because it's in a plan. It sort of humanizes the efforts. So I'm very, very appreciative. And I just wanted to end with this. There's no one right way to go about making better tomorrows. There will always be someone who will tell you that unless you're a blank or doing something else, you're not really a part of the solution. Please remember, your job isn't to impress others with your contribution, but simply to make a contribution. No matter how big or how small, we are tomorrow makers. It's by Andre Henry, who's a musician. And I can answer any questions if you have any, but thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Gina. Do we have any other questions for Gina before we let her go this evening? All right. Well, thanks again. Thanks for that activity. That was fascinating, as you said, definitely. Well, there being no further business in this work session, we will be adjourned until 6:30.